Daughter, everyone stand for a pledge of allegiance, please. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Rule call members, please.
Gary Roth.
Here.
Joe Prince.
Here.
Justin Donovan.
Here.
Uh, Judy Ewing.
Here.
Carl Kinsky.
Here.
Anthony Grass.
Uh, Jerry Bowman.
Here.
Kathy Walz. We have a quorum.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I got a motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from January 2nd, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Introduction of evidence?
Uh, we have the St. Genevieve City Comprehensive Plan Municipal Code. Uh, the preliminary plans are sitting out there and then you have all the documents that I sent you, uh, last week sitting in front of you.
Motion to accept the evidence as presented?
Second.
You have a second? Oh, didn't hear it. I got a motion in a second? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Citizen input, I take it everyone that is here is for this agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Old business.
I have none.
New business, one-year review of S U P of 658 Roger Street.
So, last year when we approved, uh, the special use permit at 658 Roger, one of the stipulations was a one-year review since it was kind of different than what we've done in the past. Uh, 658 Roger remains in compliance with all the terms and conditions of their special use permit and the city has received no complaints about the property. I just wanted to relay that to you unless you have any questions for me. There's no motion or anything necessary.
Okay.
Good.
And move. The way we wrote that or were you reviewing that?
It was a one-year. Yes, sir.
Recommendation of zoning for petition of annexation of P U D number 07-9.0-29-00-000-0042.00. Please don't let me read them yet.
P I D. Doesn't have an address.
Oh, P I D, I'm sorry.
You got parcel ID number. Um, so everything comes into the city R1, but technically within the annexation, um, ordinance, uh, the Board of Alderman is to act on the recommendation of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. So my recommendation in this instance for this piece of property would be just to maintain the R1 status. It's a small piece of property. Uh, it's just, uh, annexation requests from the Housing Authority to go ahead and bring it in. It's one of those many little pieces that for some reason.
Trailers were.
Correct. Yeah.
So they're the, the current, um, buildings that are there are already?
There are no buildings there.
Well, the rest of Housing Authority's buildings are already within the city's?
They're in, uh, R2, but the stuff along the street up there is R1. So this would match with what's next door.
And do they have plans for future development there?
No. No, I mean, it would be nice to find some ground to expand the Housing Authority because there's typically a list of folks, uh, that need that workforce housing and we're always full and those are all two and three bedrooms, but no plans to build on this piece of property.
A motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, have a rule call, please.
Gary Roth?
Yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Judy Ewing?
Yes.
Carl Kinsky?
Yes.
Jerry Bowman?
Yes.
Motion carries 602. Thank you.
Move on. Resolution 001-25, McBride Land Growth LLC is requesting a rezone the 49.04 acre parcel located along the northern side of the 5 and 600 block of Progress Parkway. Do I need to read the parcel?
No.
Thank you. From R1 single-family residential to P U D R-2 planned urban development.
So you have the staff report there. I just want to cover a few things. Um, within our planning and zoning, uh, rezone, uh, municipal code, there's a process for P U D and it has a lot of stipulations. Those will come later. Uh, McBride, uh, will have to come back and go through the subdivision process. Uh, that subdivision process will kind of meld with this P U D process. They'll have to present things for infrastructure, water and sewer plans, stormwater plans, things of that nature, street names, you know, all those things. At this point, what we're, uh, deciding is are they allowed, given the sketch plan, the preliminary plan that they presented, uh, to be rezoned to planned unit development R2? And what I used to determine my, uh, recommendation were these items that are on page two, these criteria. So do, did they take the feedback from, uh, the Board of Alderman and factor that into this plan? Yes. What the Board has asked is for, uh, more housing, a variety of housing, but focused on starter homes. Walkability, there are trails, sidewalks, um, it is walkable to the, uh, community center. It is walkable to the shopping plaza. Um, so those are the kind of things and the P U D gives the developer the chance to be creative with that solution, um, and ask for some variation from standard zoning, whether that be in building use, building size, um, size of lot, coverage of lot. Uh, in this instance, what you're really being asked to approve are different setbacks, which are going to allow for smaller lots, but then that's going to lead to, you know, a, uh, you know, a lower-priced starter home. Um, it also meets the four stipulations that I listed from the comp plan and it also meets the plans, uh, for this area within the major street plan, within the comprehensive plan. That's a quick summary. Uh, folks from McBride are here. If you have questions, uh, if you have questions for me, you can certainly ask them.
So in regards to the, I'm sorry, in regards to the setbacks, um, is that one of those details that is yet to be presented or is that listed in their plans there?
It is listed in their plan. So they are basically requesting a 15-foot front setback, five-foot side and 25-foot rear.
And we're voting on that tonight?
You're voting on approving this plan, which includes that.
Hmm. So 15-foot front, five-foot side.
I'm sorry. It's 25-foot front, five-foot side, 15-foot rear. I reversed that.
And the normal one is what for a side?
In an R2, it would be 25, eight and 25. So you're decreasing the rear setback slightly and the side setback slightly.
A lot.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're be allowing that just to get smaller homes in there? Smaller lots?
There'd be smaller lots and smaller homes, yeah.
One part of that is also the possibility either condos or the small homes where there would be an H O A where they mow the grass. I have a friend in her eighties who wants to stay in town and she wants a condo or something she doesn't have to take care of.
You want to come up and introduce yourselves? I'm going to have a good question.
And they didn't know if they only gotten that for you or not.
Sure, yes. Um, well, I'm Katie Peruka. I'm with McBride Homes. Also tonight, um, I have Jeremy Roth. He's president of our land group and Mike Baughner, our engineer on the project with Sterling Engineering. So between us three, I think hopefully we'll be able to answer, um, all of your questions. I have a little presentation. Would you want me to run through it or would you rather just?
That might answer some questions.
Okay, why don't we do that? To answer your question, um, these are, our plan is proposing single-family detached lots. So there won't be any condos or like townhouses that are attached that provide maintenance for, you know, that individual lot. There will be a homeowners association that will maintain like the common ground area. Um, but it wouldn't be like, I know you're referring to like a villa community where you don't have to cut your own grass type of thing. It's, that's not, um, proposed for this project. Does that answer?
There are several people that I've run across over time that there's a real need for that and it doesn't exist.
Right.
Not if you really want something nice.
Right, right. Okay. Um, well, let me run through what we are proposing and then, uh, we'll answer any questions that you all have. Before I dive in, I just want to talk a little bit about us, about McBride, for those of you who maybe aren't as familiar with us. Um, we're really proud, we're the largest home builder in Missouri. We're not just in St. Louis. We develop communities in a lot of different counties and municipalities outside of St. Louis, to name a few, Jefferson County, St. Charles County, Franklin, Crawford, we're in Rolla and we'd be really honored and proud to add St. Genevieve to that list. Um, we are about to celebrate a big milestone birthday, anniversary. Uh, we're about to hit 80 years in business. Um, so we're really excited and proud and just feel like that speaks to our stability So, uh, just really briefly, how did we get here tonight? Um, I know some of you are probably more familiar than others, but this has been kind of a long time, um, in the making. We were talking, we actually realized it was two years ago, literally today, to the day, um, that Jeremy first sat down, uh, with some folks from the city and from the Industrial Development Corp. for St., for St. Genevieve. Um, and really just started having a lot of conversations about the need for housing, like you had mentioned, just at different price points, um, different types of housing. And I know the city had contemplated this site, the subject site for residential development. Um, and so when the RFQ was, uh, put out, we submitted a proposal and we're thrilled to be selected. Um, and then at that point, we signed the development agreement with, um, the city and we're just kind of off to the races and happy to finally, full circle, be here tonight before you all to kind of present, um, our proposal for zoning. So if you're not familiar, this is an aerial image of the site. Um, again, as David mentioned, we're looking at 49 plus acres. That is Progress Parkway, kind of along the bottom, the south, uh, boundary line and then up, uh, the northern, uh, boundary line, that's First Baptist Church. Uh, is that Point Bossy? Is that how you say that?
Point Base.
Base, Point Base, okay. Um, I knew I was going to say that wrong. Uh, just to kind of orient you as to what we're looking at. Um, but you can, you can flip that. Wanted to highlight just some of the features of our proposed project. So we're planning to develop 173 single-family detached lots. Um, and then those lots are going to be, we will offer three different, what we call villages, but really it's like series of houses or product lines. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Um, but we will be putting in new public streets, utilities, sidewalks. As I mentioned before about the common ground, there's pretty significant amount of common ground here. Um, you talked about kind of the smaller lots opens up, um, the site for kind of more green space and common ground. So 33% roughly of the site is common ground. And as I mentioned, we will form a homeowners assis- association to, to maintain that. And we're kind of, we've kind of got that down to a science to set those up for success so that it always looks great and it's taken care of. And then some of the amenities, um, we're proposing, there will be a pedestrian trail and a playground as well.
Are those going to be open to the general public or just the residents of the?
That's to be determined. I think we, um, I, I think the idea of the trail was to connect, um, you know, the, or the commercial area and the residential area of Long Bosler and Park, Park.
Wood.
Um, to Progress Parkway. So I think we need, probably need to work with the city to make sure that that is open to the public. Um, so that's to be determined and those details are to be worked out.
Okay, thank you.
The playground would probably be just for the subdivision. So that would probably be maintained by the H O A just with the subdivision, but I think we need, have some more conversation about that trail.
And will the utilities be underground?
Utilities will be underground and they're there, right? Yeah. Um, so as David had mentioned, the site is currently zoned R1 and we're seeking the P U D R2 planned urban development, um, which as you beautifully highlighted, provides for flexibility, um, in site design and then kind of the clustering of the lots, which then opens up, um, you know, it allows for promotion more green space, common ground, preservation of natural features and less land disturbance. And again, it is really, um, it's pretty remarkable how the P U D and, and this plan aligns just so well with some of the goals in the city's master plan. And we just highlighted, um, some of those to encourage a variety of new home construction types with different price points. So when we talk in a minute about the different villages, you'll see that, um, you know, different price points, different, um, construction types. To consider revised or additional residential zoning districts to allow for denser and more affordable single-family residential units. And then encourage development of additional residential developments to provide quality housing opportunities to citizens of the city across all income and life cycle groups. And again, those, those different villages really, um, kind of hit that last bullet So a little bit about the homes, this is like the fun stuff, right? So there are single-family detached, as I mentioned. Um, so here is where the villages or the series, um, comes in. So we are going to offer three different products. So there's our Arbor series, our Bayside series and our Oakwood series. Um, within each series, there are multiple different floor plans. So the Arbor series, that's going to be, um, the homes on those smaller lots, which when I put the plan up, you'll be able to see where those, it's all color-coded and you can kind of see, um, it'll make more sense. But those are going to be, um, a little bit smaller in square footage, one-car garage, great option for somebody downsizing, somebody who wants slower maintenance, a couple just starting out, a, you know, a single professional, some, someone kind of in that phase of life. Um, then, you know, Bayside is a little bit of a move up from that. Those are a little bit larger. Um, those have a two-car garage. There are some lots that will accommodate a three-car, uh, Bayside option. Um, again, two stories, um, and ranches within that series. And then our Oakwood series, that's kind of like our, our kind of higher-end buy-up. Um, so those are again, are a little bit larger. Those will have two or three-car garages depending on the lot. And then that series has a really neat story and a half plan. So that owner suite on the first floor, throw the kids upstairs. Um, so that's a really beautiful floor plan too. But so a lot of different, you know, kind of three distinct villages within each one, many different floor plans. And then even in addition to that, each floor plan, you can get a different style elevation. So we'll show you some pictures in a minute, but if you like a lot of masonry, a brick or maybe more of a farmhouse elevation. And the result is just like a beautiful, rich in variety, streetscape. You're not a cookie cutter where every single house looks the same, but, um, it really adds a lot of character and value to the community. Open floor plans, um, fully sotted yards, landscape packages are standard. And again, I mentioned that the different elevations. And then here's the plan, um, and this is color-coded to those series. So I mentioned there's, or villages. So I mentioned there's three. It looks like there's more, but we just kind of distinguished the three-car lots. So that mustard color yellow, that's our Arbor series. Those are the smaller lots that will accommodate that one-car garage floor plan, um, ranches and two stories. And then the blue, the light blue is the middle, kind of middle-tier Bayside two-car garage. And then the dark blue is the Bayside three-car garage. And then again, moving down to the Oakwood, kind of that orange shade, that's the two-car Oakwood. And then that kind of rusty red is, those are the three-car Oakwood. If that helps visually. You can see the trail on that and then also the playground as well. Uh, my eyes are bad, but kind of like towards, uh, the Progress Parkway end of the, of the And then here's just some sample images of, of our homes. So this is the Arbor series, that, that first level, um, village. These are, um, the one-car garage, like I said, two stories, ranches. And you can see, you know, there's different styles and elevations, um, within those different floor plans. And then the, this is kind of that middle series, the Bayside, again, two-story ranches. Um, and again, the variety, you can see some of them are like more craftsman style, some of them are more traditional. The one in the bottom corner has got that like farmhouse feel, so lots of different And then finally, this is our Oakwood series. So these are kind of that high, high-end, uh, top-tier buy-up series. And these are getting a little bit bigger, two and some three-car and, uh, ranches, two stories and story and a half. And then the next couple of slides are just images of the interiors of some of our homes, just some really beautiful finishes, high ceilings and big old islands in the kitchen, um, big walk-in closets and, uh, just a lot of different finishes to kind of see what we offer. And then, um, this slide, we just wanted to highlight our kind of process for, um, our customers when they make their selections. We have, it's awesome. We have this design studio, it's in Chesterfield. So we have our customers come in two or three times, um, in the process and they will select everything, their flooring, their fixtures, all of their finishes with our design consultants. And it's great because they can kind of, I say drive the bus, like they can kind of decide where they want to put their money in their house. Do they want a, a really nice luxury master bathroom or would they rather spend their money, you know, on like a great big, you know, two-story great room or however they want to spend their money? They can kind of control the process and their budget. Um, so it, it gives them, um, and it's a lot of fun too. They enjoy it and it's an award-winning, kind of unique concept that McBride offers.
Can you give us an idea? I understand the market can change. Can you give us a rough idea of what the price range would be on these houses?
Yeah, so, uh, don't hold me to it.
I'm not going to.
But we're, we're, we're really, we would really like to start the Arbor series in the 100s and probably averaging in the, probably mid-2s. Again, depending on how crazy folks go in that design center and what they select. Um, and then the middle, the Bayside series, kind of starting in the mid-2s and going into the 3s and then probably Oakwood, you know, into the 3s, into the 4s and maybe even, you know, beyond. So we'd really like to start in the 1s, um, to offer that, uh, to folks, but again, you know, at this point, it's a little early to commit to that, but that's kind of what Great. And then this is just kind of a summary slide. Um, we're, we're proposing new single-family homes in St. Gen to, to meet the goals of the master plan, um, three distinct villages and product lines. We think this is a really smart layout, this plan. Um, it's got some great amenities, a lot of common ground. Staff has recommended approval, so we're asking tonight for your positive recommendation and we welcome any questions you have. And, um, yeah, happy to, to chat about anything I've covered or anything I haven't.
I think my first question is going to be in regards to the setbacks. So, um, when you, when you drive around St. Genevieve, you'll notice that homes aren't as concentrated.
Yes.
As they would be in this subdivision. Um, is, how do you, I'm sure it's similar in other communities you've built in. Uh, this is a totally new concept for St. Genevieve.
Yeah.
Um, how do you, how do you see that received in other communities?
That's a great question because we do build in a lot of smaller, you know, municipalities and cities and it's, it is a concern that comes up all the time because it is new and it's like, we're not used to this. Um, but it's received very well. I mean, that's why we keep doing it because people, people don't want these big old lots anymore as much as it sounds nice. They, they really, the buyer today is looking for, you know, um, they want to put their money into their home, not necessarily the lot. And then you have the common ground, so for the space. So it is different, um, but it is, it is kind of the trend and it is what we're seeing. Um, and it, it is pretty well received. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that was well said and I think, you know, as we've gone through this process, value and affordability has been kind of one of the key aspects and now one of the goals of the city, wanted to see in its development and, and those narrow lots allow that value, um, and like Katie said, to allow the home buyer to, to invest their dollars within the home. Um, and if you make, every, every foot wider, you make those lots, that's another foot of pavement, another foot of water, another foot of sewer and that just drives the, the cost of the homes up. If you gave a buyer the choice, hey, would you rather have an extra five feet in your lot or would you rather have those upgraded countertops or cabinets or backsplash? They're going to choose those home features like Katie said.
I look at it as a safe, go go ahead, sir.
Oh, I, I just wanted, since we're on that specific thing, before we ask any other questions that are off the setbacks and stuff, um, I'm going to just echo what I had said during closed session. Our plan, our master plan, our setbacks and all that stuff, those are more of a protection issue that we have in place to protect existing homes. Uh, I've been in homeowner association management and condo association management for over 20 years now. Um, anytime a new plan comes in, this type of thing is done, uh, because in order to maximize your land, I mean, right now, none of our, well, with the exception of Valley Springs, St. Jude, Lynn Drive and Roger, none of them conform to our setbacks and stuff that we have on, on plan now. So they're not asking for anything that every other community doesn't ask of them. They have to go through the same type of planned unit development thing. Um, you know, I, I get that this is different for St. Genevieve, but it's also time, you know, this isn't right in the middle of the historic district. This is out in a, I mean, it's called progress for a reason. We want to move forward. We want to get expanded out and we feel, we felt as a board that this is a great opportunity. Um, you know, so in a, the setbacks that we have, that's to keep me from moving in next to Gary and expanding right up next to his house. That, I mean, it's, it's to protect the current homeowners. They're not necessarily there for new construction. New construction, especially large developments, always go through changes and setbacks. Uh, that's very, very common, uh, that the laws on the books don't necessarily apply to new things. That's why we have the mechanism for a planned unit development. So, um, I don't want the setbacks, although in most places it would be a concern, but this is a completely new venture. There's no neighbors to encroach upon for the most part. I mean, it touches part of, uh, Point Base a little bit and all that, but I don't see, I mean, they know what they're doing. We've had it looked at. It, it fits with the surveyors and the, uh, what do you call it?
Engineers.
Engineers, yeah. Chad a brain fart for a minute, but, I mean, I think this is a win-win for the community and we need to. and we need to do what we can to, I mean, granted, we're going to fine-tune everything and, and I mean, this is just a plan for right now. Um, we can get into particulars and all that later and there will be many, many changes as we go along. And when we find out, you know, with the underground stuff that they have to deal with, there will be some changes. So we'll get to those when we get to them, but right now this, this plan looks pretty darn good.
Setbacks are actually better than my next neighbor being on the lawn. So at least you'd have five feet.
Well, your five feet and their five feet, so there'll be 10.
Right. But what I'm saying is that I'm on Main Street and I'm right next to the old store.
Oh.
That's on the lawn all the way
Right.
the street. So this is actually a good thing because it protects everybody. You, you know you're going to have that much space.
True. And I want to make sure I took my notes down right. 25 feet front, five feet on the side, 15 feet on the rear. Okay. So we'd be encroaching three feet on the each side and then 10 feet on the
Which six feet's a lot between them if it's burning? And the fall zone, that's my concern is the safety fact. Is on, I've been a firefighter for 35 years. Six feet between them, more, by taking that three feet off, is a lot if one's burning. You know, 10 feet apart, it's going to catch us the second. We're not a paid department. We have to respond to the house to get there. You know, it's not like you get into big incorporated areas that have people sitting there ready to go. Uh, and a fall zone, if one collapses, you know, that's not there either. So that's my concern. Six feet is a lot extra.
Yeah. To your point, on a two-story home, 16 feet is within that as well. You know, that's, but yeah, I, I totally understand your point. Um, and Joe, I know the board has toured some other McBride subdivisions. How do these setbacks compare to other subdivisions that, I mean, you guys have done?
They're all different. I mean, they're, it's not really
We do these setbacks a lot, but they're not, I mean, it, it depends. And these are, you know, again, not, it's not like every house is going to be at the setbacks. Like this is just, you know, um, sort of parameters, uh, that we have to work within. But, um, but yeah, I mean, we do, we do five, five-foot side yards a lot. Yeah, there's some sample, um, kind of aerial photos of some of our communities. Um, you can kind of get a sense from looking at that. I don't know for sure what the setbacks are in those particular, you know.
And I think you kind of answered that question. So obviously depending a lot upon how, you know, the land lays out, the setbacks will vary. But not, I shouldn't say setbacks, setbacks are what they are, but what, what they're actually physically built to
Right. Depending on what they, which floor plan they choose and which lot, you know.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And will that vary? This is just kind of curiosity. Will that vary based on the neighborhood, whether it's Arbor, Bayside or Oakwood? Will, 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 will that, you know, in the higher ends, will you put more space between homes or, you know, is there a different approach to that or?
The setbacks are consistent throughout.
Yeah, they're the most, the lot sizes are, are designed to fit the house.
Gotcha. And has the number of homes to be built on the property changed? I don't ever remember that 173 number.
It, it has, it has. Um, so, and, uh, maybe Jeremy can speak to this a little bit more, but there was a, a pla, our, the plan we were working with originally with the city, um, is a little bit different from the plan we have tonight. It wasn't originated with us. The city had that plan, um, drawn and we were working with that. But then once we pulled, um, pulled in our engineer and started really getting serious about the project and digging in, uh, Sterling had some, um, really some great in, insight that to some inefficiencies and how to kind of rework it a bit. And we were able to add, I mean, a hand, more than a handful of, of lots to the plan, just kind of rearranging it a bit and, and making it a little bit more efficient. Um, so it is a little bit different than the plan that we started, that we started.
And what was that initial number?
The initial number we worked with probably a year ago was 157.
Okay. So that hasn't varied substantially. Yeah. It's, what is that, 15, 16?
Has there been any hydro, hydraulic studies done on what the detention basins and everything are going to have to be yet?
Yes, we've done preliminary, uh, look at that. We, we've actually looked at the whole development and done a stormwater management plan on it. We do that very, in the very beginning, just to ensure everything fits and works.
And that includes the, uh, discharge from the other detention basin across, across Progress?
Yeah, we're, we're actually, that's just going to go underneath the highway and it'll be in the creek. It doesn't actually affect us at all.
There's no creek there. The one that's under the power line cut?
The one that runs along the, I guess we could pull up the plan.
The drainage way along, kind of under Progress Parkway and then runs along the eastern forest of our site.
This one comes from the farmer's fields to Progress Parkway and comes under the road.
There's a catch basin on the, what would that be? The south side of Progress Parkway comes under
It's under the power line.
And then it goes into that ditch.
Yeah.
That's
Okay.
I don't think this is all preliminary, but the detention ponds you see don't tie into that system.
Correct.
But eventually they'll release down to the same spot. Yes.
Okay.
So my understanding then correctly that the water would not go, the stormwater would go south? Or is that
In north. It'll, it'll eventually release. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, I see the detention.
Yeah, there's a here and one here. But I, they would eventually release in the direction of Point Base.
Correct.
And how about the mine? I know they've got some of those vents. And those fields are not, they're probably not in the same place that it's going on field.
Right. So it's our understanding that two of those have to stay, the mine vents. We, we've reached out to those folks and we're, um, waiting to kind of sit down with them and
That's our understanding too, that two of the five will have to stay.
How close proximity will those two have to be?
We don't know which two yet. We need to be with them ASAP.
I don't, they're not as loud as they used to be.
No.
They used to sound like a jet engine running.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um, but yeah, they're not as bad as they used to be.
I think if you look at the plans, Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, four of the five end up in either common ground.
Right. They do.
Yeah.
So we're thinking it's going to land in these areas here?
Yeah, they're actually listed on here.
Oh, I think there's one here. Okay.
Okay.
That, I mean, that's just curiosity.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I had discussed with Gary, you know, the, the stormwater issue, um, you know, and Dave knows where all of that kind of funnels to in that one area. Basically it ends up in a sinkhole that drains into the lines. Um, and if that were to ever plug or fill or overflow, it would put a substantial portion of, uh, of those neighborhoods at risk. You know, so that is a, a concern, you know, just to make sure that, you know, it is addressed.
Gary, Dave, I, I'm supposed to be at another meeting.
Okay.
And I mean, I don't know if we can boot on the plug and more conversation afterwards and I can just leave, I'm not, I'm just on another. If that'd be possible. Do we still have a court?
We have a forum without, but we can't take a vote until there's a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. What, what's your motion?
My motion is to approve the McBride's request to rezone the land from R1 to the plan R2, Planned Urban Development.
And I will second that.
I have a motion in a second. Have a roll call please.
Gary Rock?
Yes, but I'd like to note not in favor of the five-foot setback.
We, I'm going to say yes or no at this point.
Well, I can still note that.
You can't. I thought you said no.
Oh, I said yes, I want to note it.
I got you. So it's a yes vote?
With a note, yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Judy Ewing?
Yeah.
Carl Kinsky?
Yes.
Jerry Bowman?
Yes.
Motion carries 602 and I'll put that note in the minutes.
Thank you for accommodating me. I'm sorry.
I got another one.
Thank you very much.
So again, these are sketch preliminary plans. I don't, I don't foresee any major variations. However, they have to come back to you with, uh, preliminary plans that include more detail in the subdivision process. Could there be slight variation? There could be. Um, you would still have approval of those and there's also an amendment process. You know, if, if everything gets approved and they want to amend it, there's a process for that also. But again, back through us. And on, in this instance and in the final subdivision instance, you're recommending approval or denial to the board and it's up to them ultimately. Does that make sense? Okay.
And do we have residential requirements for Off Street Park? Is that certainly?
I think that's pretty, but there's not as far as ordinance wise.
Yeah.
That would be by HOA or, you know, like Valley Spring has it, but that was subdivision rules. I guess that's basically an HOA or was.
Several of them were supposed to be, they were never
Correct.
There was supposed to be a limit in town where people weren't allowed to have four by cars in their front yard, you know, and pork on the glass, but wherever that goes, you may want to put that in the HOA.
Well, that would be a perfect for an HOA.
Yeah, because it's an issue here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'll mark the vote here. I didn't know if there were other questions now that Carl has left.
And then the streets, it looks like they're 30-foot wide.
30, uh, for the two that kind of stub in, uh, Bosler and then, uh,
Oakwood.
And then 26 for, uh, the kind of internal streets. What's the other one? Bosler and
Kind of those main arteries are wide.
Yep.
Hey, Gary Smith.
This is like a little teeny detail and y'all should obviously do what you think is right, but one of the issues we're having downtown is we can't find a manhole. So if anything goes wrong with our, our connection, I don't know where it is.
Really?
Yeah. And there's no way to figure, I don't know if there's any way to figure it out, if anybody knows. It would be good if y'all had that in the plans for people
Yeah.
20 years from now
Yep.
to know where that is.
Yeah. That's a good detail to know.
Our urban developers 250 years ago did an infrastructure plan now, particularly
125 years old, I just didn't think of that.
Where Judy lives, there have been people living for 250 years.
Yeah.
So.
You need a motion?
Oh, a motion, yeah. A motion? Take a little favor?
Aye.
Vote?